Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business, and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders a council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply, as cautioned, shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who possesses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's right created by the Constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
City of Titusville, city council special meeting, September 11, 2025, at 5:30. I call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to take a moment and ask you to bow your heads for a moment of silence. It's been a tough week, given the incidents that have happened nationwide. But also today, we remember 24 years ago, the heinous attacks on our country on 9/11/2001. Please bow your heads. Thank you very much. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, your cadence is, you know, getting a little off. Getting a little off. You forget the commas. All right. City manager.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council. The purpose of this special meeting is to conduct the first public hearing as required by Florida statute for the FY26 city of Titusville annual operating budget. All we'll do is we'll have a short presentation, a PowerPoint, conducted by our finance director, then open up the public hearing. As you can see, Mr. Stokes is not available this evening, so I'll be doing double duty, and I'll read the ordinances at the beginning of the public hearing, at which point we'll have citizen discussion and also council discussion. And then we'll finish, after the public hearing is concluded, with adopting three motions for the budget.
Thank you very much, city manager.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council. Thank you for being here this evening. I also wanted to recognize the 9/11 today, so thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. This is, as the city manager said, the first of two required public hearings to adopt the city of Titusville's FY26 annual budget. We're going to go to the budget process, and this is just a little bit of, some of this will be a reminder from meetings earlier, but this is how we're going to go through this. This is our overall budget process. If you'll recall that we had on August 7th, we had a budget workshop where the city council was present. At that time, we proposed the operating millage rate, the city manager did, of 6.3000 mills. That workshop that you all attended is where we got the most of the feedback of where this budget was to be presented for this evening, and so that budget is what is included tonight. The operating millage rate of 6.3000 is a decreased millage rate from last year. I just want to remind you that the current millage rate that is still in effect is 6.5817. Just so you can have a reference to the difference between the two rates. Tonight is the first public hearing. Our final public hearing will be on September 18th at 5:30 in this chambers. So as you can see, this millage rate of 6.3 is what we use to build this FY26 budget, and that's the ad valorem piece of the revenue. It is in compliance with the chapter 74, 430, which requires us to have a 10% cap on prior year revenue. And so this budget does meet that law. There's no question about that. It is the lowest rate that the city has levied in 17 years. So that's a nice chart that you have seen before. And also that we must discuss the percent of increase in the millage over the rolled back rate, if any, and there is a small increase over that rolled back rate in the general fund, the purposes for that additional ad valorem revenue. And then we'll take public comments. So again, the millage rate of 6.3 is what is used to build the budget. It is 1.71% above the rolled back rate of 6.1938. This millage rate generates $878,669 of additional revenue over last year's adopted budget. This budget includes a 3% COLA, and that is to attract and retain the best-in-class workforce. It also includes increases for public safety, technology, vehicles, and equipment, and it includes the cost of consumables, which, as we know, we are still in somewhat of an inflationary period where costs really have not come down. This next slide, you'll recognize this. This is your strategic goals and objectives. So the budget, this comes into play when we're building the budget, and so I just wanted to remind you of what those are. The 26 budget environment is laid out somewhat by the city manager and somewhat by circumstances that happened in the economy and so forth. The property values in the city of Titusville increased approximately 9.5% for FY26. I do want to share with you that state shared revenues, and I think I brought this up in the workshop, have decreased by 15.4%, and so that is reflected in this budget as well. The building and development activities, they still are nominally increased in this budget. And operating personnel costs have increased approximately 7.6% due to the workforce. And though we have a 3% COLA, that includes all of the benefits that go along with the salary increase. Overall healthcare costs, if you recall, went up about 35.6%. That is also reflected in this budget. The OPEB liability is slowly trending downward. This budget includes the required 50% city contribution into that trust fund, and we have approximately $30 million of unfunded projects. So the budget priorities, as we continue to use citywide culture of continuous process improving, using the lean six sigma, which is the methodology and performance measures, so we continue to use that. We allocate resources to align with the strategic goals and objectives, like I said earlier, for the city council. And we continue to pursue economic development opportunities through prudent use of ad valorem, tax abatements, and other economic incentives, which you're still currently working on some of those. More of the priorities are that we invest in employees' professional development. We provide opportunities to participate in best-in-practice training. We continue to evaluate and adjust employee compensation, cost of living pay, and benefits to attract and retain the best-in-quality workforce. And of course, it accords that 3% COLA that I mentioned earlier. This budget also maintains the general fund emergency and stabilization reserve level requirements. More of the priorities are the five-year plan that is generally laid out by the city manager is FY26 through FY30. And we had used a 5% maximum increase in the operating expenses year over year. The 5% seems high, but that's because of the inflationary pressures that we are still experiencing in order to be able to cover the operating costs. The focus on the operating budgets on the near and midterm critical capital requirements are in this budget as well as public safety enhancements, public outreach, infrastructure improvements, including roads, utility, information technology, and public facilities. We adjust current staffing levels where there is an identified critical shortfall and recoup savings, staffing savings through attrition, job sharing, and position reductions, which is something the city manager has, that he plans to do this year. Continuing with priorities, we continue to examine the effectiveness of health insurance. The policies, as you know, were presented earlier at the meeting in last week, and so those costs are included in this budget. We continue to address the liabilities and debt, funding for OPEB. And like I said before, we did fund the mandatory amount for OPEB. And we encouraged managed growth using low-impact development principles as a means of developing and attracting built environmental while protecting and conserving our natural resources. That was taken into consideration in this budget. Okay, so this is then, on the next slide, then, we have what is the total city budget. And you'll see that it's $157,134,653. That is the total budget for the entire city. And you can see that that budget is going to change. We have two items that came to us since the workshop. One of them was the signing of four additional contracts for school resource officers that amounted to $557,219. So that amount will be added into the adopted budget. So you'll see that number included in the budget at the final hearing. And then we also have the debt service, which, if you recall, for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, that debt was paid off this year. It had already been included in our budget, and so this bottom entry of $730,356 will be removed from the adopted budget. This next one is a graph of all of the revenues citywide. You can see that they're laid out there pretty much similar to what they were at the workshop. And you can see that property tax makes up about 45% of all of the funds. I'm sorry, it's charges for services. I'm colorblind. Charges for services make up 45% of the total budget. On the next one is the expenditures. And you can see under the expenditures, then, that we do have quite a bit of general government costs. And it just works into, it's very similar to what it was at the budget workshop. It really didn't change at all. Even with those few little tweaks that are going to happen, these numbers still won't change. So you'll see these still at the end for the adopted budget. I like this slide. This slide shows the ad valorem per resident comparison. And you can see that Titusville does very well with their ad valorem resident. We're very near the bottom, and I think that Brevard County is the only, they have the 3% cap, so that's the only reason I think they're a little bit lower than we are. So the ad valorem per resident, I have had colleagues call me about this before, and they're a little bit jealous of this particular slide, so I think we do a good job of that. The next one is the general fund millage comparison. And you can see Titusville is fairly in the middle of that as far as the actual millage rate goes. And so where we're at now, while we're lower than we were last year, others have, based on their needs, they're just slightly lower than we are, but pretty much we're in the middle. This is the favorite slide of everybody. This is our tax house. This breaks down what the residential homesteaded property owner would pay in the city of Titusville. If we look at their tax bill and we break it down, all of their services that would be required of them, you can see the breakdown here by each entity and what their particular charges are and the percent of what makes up their entire tax bill. So this is based on a homesteaded property with a value of $260,780. So what I did over last year is I took the tax house we used last year. I found a house in Titusville that was about 9.5% greater valued this year so that I could keep this as a true apples-to-apples comparison. And this is also at 6.3 mills for the city of Titusville, and it has a homestead exemption of $50,722. It also includes a $25,000 exemption for the school board property portion. Okay. Do I have any questions up to this point for city council?
Mayor Muscoso.
So I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. And just to be clear, I'm very for this program. But did you say four school resource officers are costing 550?
No, no, that's revenue.
Revenue, okay.
Yes, those are contracts that, because we have school resource officers that are police officers, these are four additional contracts that the police department went out and brought into. I think we have seven now. Do we have seven? Thirteen? We have 13 contracts now with schools where the resource officers. So they actually pay us to have our officers at their schools.
Okay.
So that's revenue that's coming into the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Stokoe.
Yes, to clarify on that, so I believe then our revenue went from $157 million down to $156 million? On that one slide?
Yes.
Okay, so my question was, because we're not now anticipating to get as much revenue, where did we cut in the budget?
The number that was cut was the debt service.
Okay, so that...
Yes, so if you look at the top number, the 157, can you go back to that slide real quick? It's page 11. If you look at the very top number, the 157 in the middle,
Yes, yep.
And then you add the 57,000 and subtract the 730, that's going to get you the 156. It's a net number.
Okay, so you just changed the debt. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
It's a net number.
Thank you.
Mayor Nelson.
So property tax makes up what percent of our budget?
For the general fund, it's about 40%. Ad valorem is about 40% of the general fund budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can you clarify that, because I thought 45% was charges for services?
That's the whole city budget. So if I just look at ad valorem, that's only in the general fund, and that makes up 40% of the general fund budget. Charges for services is the entire citywide budget, which many of the funds have charges for services in them.
Actually, I misunderstood her question. I thought she was talking about the whole 156 million.
Yep, nope.
I was like, that's only 20%, you know, but she was talking about just the general fund.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the next, then, we're on to the rates. You've seen these rates. They were in a slightly different format at the workshop. But the next three slides, then, if you have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin so that he can talk about, if you have any questions about these slides.
Kevin looks very excited to do that.
So these are our traditional, so this is a 3/4-inch water meter serving a residential home using 5,000 gallons a month. They'll see an impact of $4.70 to their monthly water bill for water and sewer. If we go to the next slide, this is the 3/4-inch of a commercial user, which does pay a higher fixed rate. So they see, you know, a little over $6 a month impact. All these are 5% increases across the board. And then the final one is a 1-inch commercial user using 15,000 gallons, which does move them through the tiers a little bit, and they see a $16 a month impact. So all water sewer rate increases were 5% on both sides. We don't have a slide for it, but just in summary, solid waste, the impact was $1.43 a month for a resident, and it's an 8% increase. And prior, the not-ad valorem assessment for stormwater is $2 a month. So the total utility impact was around $8 a month for a normal house, not counting any discounts they get on stormwater.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, so the next slide, then, this is where we're going to have the reading of the ordinances. Is that where you come in? You're going to read those for Jim tonight?
Beginning of the public hearing.
Okay, so these are the ordinances that we're going to ask you to adopt tonight, and then we're going to amend two of the utility rate ordinances. And you can see what they're numbered here and what they're for. So this is a section that I'm going to read exactly like it is. Florida statute says I have to read this publicly, and that I have to state it in a certain way. So bear with me, I'm going to read it nice and slow so it's read into the record correctly. The city of Titusville, Florida is the taxing authority. 6.1938 is the rolled back millage rate. The operating millage rate to be levied is 6.3000 mills. The percent of increase over the rolled back millage rate is 1.71%, which is characterized as a tax increase. Then we're up to the recommended actions. So you're going to read the ordinances?
At this point, it'd be appropriate to open the public hearing.
So opened. Do you have to read the rules of the public hearing?
You have the rules of the public hearing.
City clerk, do you have the rules?
Excuse me, sir. I do believe the ordinances, each title has to be read at this time, and then you'll proceed into the succession of the public hearing for each one, sir.
All right, city manager.
So I'll go ahead and read the ordinances. Ordinance number 27-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2026, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 28-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2026, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 29-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending section 21-241 and 21-243 of the code of ordinances by amending and increasing the scheduled rates and charges for water and sewer service, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 30-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending section 16-116 of the code of ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste, recycling, and additional cart fees, and by amending section 16-117 of the code of ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees, and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees, and by amending section 16-118 of the code of ordinances by amending and establishing an increase in the extra charges for special services, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and an effective date and incorporation into the code. Ordinance number 31-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, adopting the enterprise fund and capital improvements program budgets for the city of Titusville for fiscal year 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city manager. The reason why I asked about the rules for a public hearing is I'm used to Jim reading the rules of people signing the oath card and everything like that, so I'm assuming that's what we have to do, correct? Yeah, so, city clerk, do you... So, no, we don't need to do that?
Hi, yes, sir. At the beginning of the meeting, there was an announcement that individuals wishing to speak on the agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on the non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on each agenda item. And all sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, city clerk. Do we have any cards?
Yes, sir. We have one card at this time, Mr. Stan Johnston. And he has submitted his card on each of the five ordinances.
Thank you.
Mayor Connors.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, sir. May I verify, we're opening the first public hearing on ordinance 27?
Yes, we are open.
My understanding is that, I read this as, this is the first public hearing, yet you're going to be voting on, not final adoption, but something else other than that. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so we're going to have a vote on five different ordinances tonight. But, you know, not the final, the final's going to be this night.
18th is the final year of public hearing.
So am I going to be allowed to speak on each one of these ordinances? There's five ordinances.
If we're doing five separate votes, then that is true.
All right, okay, all right.
You're allowed to speak on each one of them.
Okay, may I introduce myself? I think most of you know who I am. I'm Stan Johnston. Sometimes I question that. But I wasn't here at the last meeting because I just had my cataract surgery. So I told Megan is that now when I go out, I can only see one moon, whereas there was two moons before. whereas there was two moons before. So this is an improvement. Hopefully, this will improve what I have to say to you. And pretty much tonight, I want to make a comment is that, about what is ethical? Because, you know, I don't like what the city is doing. And I have a definition of ethical that I've used for many years, that I was taught, and that is an ethical, an act is ethical based upon its consequences. And as you know, I've mentioned a number of shortcomings the city has had and consequences, like, for example, building dams and flooding property is illegal and it's unconstitutional. This is something that I'm bringing up because this is part of your budget. It's not part of your budget that you should correct it, but it should be. That's a problem, and you're continuing to do that. So what I do right now is I'm just praying for you. Lord, I just pray that your will be done, and we know that your will be done is for truth. And the truth is, is that the city is illegally flooding people's property against the Constitution, and they're not considering it for this vote of this ordinance, which they should be. And it's not fair. So you'll see, I don't, I'm not allowed to put a poster up, but there's a picture of a dam with me at the bottom of the dam, and that's flooding my property against law. And it's, the consequences are, it's illegal, and you do it anyways. Just like, in a similar way as what we have is spraying people with sewage. So, Lord, I just pray, I pray that your will be done, and it'll be something of truth and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And just for your own edification, at the next public hearing that we do, or the next ordinance that we're doing, please stay on topic. All right, this last one was about the millage rate, and you were not on topic.
Absolutely, I was on topic.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, please have a seat.
Because I'm against it, and I've, for the carding, I closed it.
We'll call on you again, but next time, stay on topic, please. All righty, no other cards, City Clerk?
No other cards submitted.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm that. City Council? You guys have anything? I'm not seeing anything, then I'll entertain a motion. I'll close the public hearing on the first ordinance.
I can make that motion.
Public hearing is closed. Can I have a motion for the ordinance, please? Member Nelson?
I don't think we need a motion, do we? This is the first public hearing.
We'd go through these five ordinances, the public hearings, and then at the end, after council discussion's over, and citizens input, then we would do the three motions at the very end.
Okay, so there's only three votes?
Yes, there's only three. Florida statutes requires us for you to tentatively adopt the millage rate in the budget, and then finally adopt it at the second hearing.
Gotcha, my understanding was we were going to vote on all five of these, since they're all separate ordinances, but thank you. All righty, so we called the public comment on A, then. There was only one card put in, so...
Move on to the second, twenty-eight dash two zero two five.
All right, City Clerk, that public hearing is now open.
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, and I have, for over two months, I have sent, this has to do with the budget. I have sent to, called up Christine Matthews, who is your secretary for calls to city manager and council members. And I told her, I said, listen, please contact all of council members and city manager. This has to do with budgeting, about the email that I sent you on June the twenty-third and July the twenty-sixth. So it's been now over two months, and this, these matters on budgeting that I sent you, no one has responded, except I did have a call from Mrs. Muscoso, but we didn't make contact, it was just on my answering machine. So this shows you what you are, what council is doing. In other words, I have a June the twenty-fifth email has to do about, and both of them have to do with horrible spending by the city of Titusville, and how you're getting away with it, and it's horrible. And the June twenty-fifth indicates is because of what you're doing. Because of what you're doing, I have made a complaint, not only to the governor and the state attorney, and Chief of Police John Lau. I made complaints to them, and also it went by a mail to Donald Trump, and it's gone to the FBI, because what you're doing is illegal. Illegal, very much so. So the question might be asked is, how do you get away with being illegal? How do all you council members and the city get away with illegal? So I called up the state attorney. I talked to the state attorney, I said, you know...
Mr. Johnson, please get on topic and talk about the budget.
This has to do with money, how you are able to get away with this without, because right now, you're spending money on Mr. Cook. Mr. Cook, he's your professional engineer, and so is about four other professional engineers. And it so happens, what is happening is that when it comes to the issue, a very expensive issue of turning those fountains off in the park, because you're spraying people with, it's against, the city is spending over fifty percent...
Point of order is recognized, yes, ma'am.
Point of order. I mean, this has nothing to do with whether or not we should adopt its budget.
It has very much to do with, because over fifty percent of your budget is safety and public safety and health. Over fifty percent of your budget. This has to do...
We are talking about the budget coming up.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
And you're turning around and saying, I'm talking about a budget, doesn't make it relevant.
This is, this is a budget item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
It's all money. I would like to have, I request time taken away from what you took my time. I don't get it.
Thank you. All right, this public hearing for ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. Moving on to the next one, City Manager.
Twenty-nine dash two zero two five.
City Clerk?
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
This is not a surprise to me, what is happening here, because what I would like you to do is I would like you to use your employees as they are hired. For example, is that right now, is you need to be trained to do things properly so that your expenditures, for example, your safety, health, and welfare. I'm a professional engineer. Mr. Lau is a policeman. We both have very similar jobs. I don't do enforcement, but I do, I do report what you're doing. And you're breaking many laws, causing lots of expenses.
Mr. Johnson, you're not on topic.
And I'm against, I'm against your approval of this because of the expenses. My goodness. Look at what our budget is. Over fifty percent is health, safety, and welfare of the public. Look at your pie charts. That's what I'm talking about. My job as a professional engineer is what? I'm paid for what? To protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public.
Mr. Johnson, it's not on the topic.
And that is fifty, over fifty percent of your budget. That's what I'm talking about. Over fifty percent of your budget, which you're not handling, you're mishandling, you're misappropriating, it's what I have is...
All right, Mr. Johnson, please have a seat.
Disinformation, I don't agree with you, but I'm going to, I'm going to sit down under protest because I'm talking about the budget. Thank you.
Doing a public hearing for fees regarding water and sewer. Any other cards, City Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Just wanted to confirm. We're closing that public hearing of twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five. City Manager?
Next public hearing is thirty dash two zero two five, amending the solid waste charges and rates.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Yes, sir, one card, Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston. Not only am I a professional engineer, but I'm a professional land surveyor. I've been employed by the city of Titusville for a number of years, in which I received retirement and pension. And I'd worked on these issues that has to do with city budgeting, very much so. And I know what I'm talking about. I was just removed from this seat right here because I'm talking about the budget and what the city of Titusville is not doing with a budget. I am opposed to this budget. And what I was done is I was removed from this podium.
Mr. Johnson, you're not on topic.
This one's on solid waste, the solid waste rates.
You being asked to sit down is not an agenda item.
The other stuff, you can speak on petitions and requests, but this one specifically on solid waste.
Point of information, no, we can't, it's a special meeting.
Petitions and requests on there.
It has to be about the...
All right, let me give you an example on solid waste. It's what I came up to you with, was a sheet about, it says like one hundred ninety-seven or something like that, parts per trillion of forever chemicals. What's happening in Michigan right now? What's happening in Michigan? There's a farmer who had dairy cattle, he changed to beef cattle.
What does Michigan have to do with it?
It has very much to do with it. In other words, he was shut down because of solid waste. He was shut down because what he did was he got from the government, he got the sludge and so forth from the sewage treatment plant, and he was certified that it was, everything was good. He put it down on his ground, and what he does, it grows plants, the cows eat the plants, and they have all these forever chemicals. So the government came in and they stopped it completely. And for example, you're not...
Caution once, please have a seat.
That's solid waste.
No, it's not. Have a seat, please.
Oh, well, I disagree with that because that's what I was learning about, is that now he's shut down because of forever chemicals that we have.
There's no more cards on this item? We're going to close the public hearing for...
Sir, excuse me, sir, an additional card was submitted. Kevin Rosa.
Okay. Thank you for catching that, I just assumed we were still with the one.
I put it in late, sorry about that.
All good.
I just want to relay a story. A friend of mine from Orange County said Titusville's a poor town, and I disagreed. I said, no, we're not, and he said, yes, we are. So I looked it up, and compared to Orange County, we're like twenty percent per capita income is below, you know, so it is kind of poor. So before you raise our rates, there's a couple of things we can do. One of them would be, we're supposed to be a tree city, we're fighting for every tree we can plant, but right now, a homeowner can sell a perfectly healthy native live oak to the curb, and the city grapple will come along and pick it up for free. There's no other city that I know of that does that. We could require a permit, which will generate income, or just get rid of the grapple so we stop dropping all these native trees at the curb. That's one thing. Another thing is, right now, the claw truck, it goes by twice. What if on the second and fourth week of the month, we put all the cans on one side of the street? If it's on a busy street, right? And then on the first and third, on the opposite side? So the truck goes by one time instead of twice? Just to kind of cut mileage, fuel, hours, you know, just trying to think outside the box, a couple ideas. You know, Titusville, we have a lot of impoverished, we have the fixed income, which is on their way to becoming impoverished. Two dollars here, three dollars there. At the end of the year, it's five thousand dollars. So, you know, before you raise our rates, just think, we can do smarter, not harder, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Rosa, and we're closing the public hearing for ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty-five. City Manager?
The final public hearing is thirty-one dash two zero two five, adopting the enterprise fund and capital improvements program budgets.
Thank you, City Manager. Public hearing is now open. City Clerk?
Yes, sir, Stan Johnston.
I'm Stan Johnston, and I don't appreciate the way I've been treated because I've been talking about the budget, and yet I've been removed from this podium for talking about budget items. And this particular budget item, I've talked about many times. I've sent you emails on it, and you haven't read them, and you haven't responded. What am I to do? In other words, I'm told to sit down when I'm talking on subjects, for example, just what happened just last time?
Mr. Johnson, I'm cautioned you're not on topic. We're not talking about your ability to stand at the podium. We're talking about ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and you'll see, you'll see behind you right here, it has to do with, for example, it talks about violation of the stormwater management program. Over here, it shows a picture of a dam in which the city of Titusville is violating ordinances that has to do with money expenditures about the city of Titusville and flooding of property. I have come to the city of Titusville repeatedly on this matter of God's law. God's law is what?
All right, Mr. Johnson, you've already cautioned, please have a seat.
Water flows downhill, that's a money item.
Please have a seat.
That city is violating these problems and disobeying the stormwater management plan is not capital. It is.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing for thirty-one dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. Counsel, please discuss. And by the way, I'm having a hard time seeing whose names pop up because of reflection of the light. Nobody say anything? Member Nelson?
Well, I would say this, to Mr. Rose's point, that may be something that's appropriate, and maybe we can look at it in the next couple of months. Right now, we have the budget in front of us. Some were inclined to go ahead with it at this point, but ask that we consider his suggestions, if it's possible. Although Kevin may have a response to that.
Well, we looked into one-side service a number of years ago under Mayor Tully. Some of the caution was a lot of streets, we can't drive on one side only. You know, we have to get back out of the neighborhoods. And then we also are asking a neighbor to take their neighbor's can to their house, and they get it back to the right house at the end of the day. So there were a lot of concerns. I think Mayor Tully actually piloted it in Shingala for a while. The only city I know that does that is Northport, but they don't have streets that are fully developed yet. The other side of that, they charge for other services. There are cities that charge for everything. They charge to pick up a cow, they charge to pick up a tree. That puts a lot on staff to register that charge, and appropriately register that charge at the point of service, as opposed to we just roll that into the current rate and we pick up everything. Now, if we do have a house that is putting out four truckloads, we do have provision in the code to charge for those extra trucks. And we do that for the golf course and such, but for mostly residential areas, we do try to avoid the excessive surcharging, both for our employee standpoint and the person who realistically, when the tree's cut down, the tree company's supposed to remove it. If they don't, then we're adding charges to the resident that probably they didn't anticipate getting, but...
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Usually, if you have a reputable tree service provider, they'll haul it away, but the ones that are typically not licensed or insured will leave it on the side of the street. And to your point, it might have saved some money in, you know, cutting the tree down or trimming it, but they're going to, they're going to get you in the long run. Member Nelson, do you still have something?
So I think I need to do a motion to tentatively adopt twenty-seven twenty twenty-five. Am I correct?
After council finished the discussion, the first motion would be to tentatively adopt the operating millage of six point three mills.
Okay, so I would make that motion.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion from counsel? See you none, City Clerk?
Yes, sir. May I ask if, as we, the motion is to tentatively adopt ordinance twenty-seven at the tentative millage rate for the operation of the city, at which mills and which is above what percentage of increase?
Operating millage rate of six point three mills, which is one point seven one, over rollback rate of six point one nine three eight.
Does the second still stand?
Yes.
All right, thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. May I also clarify the, at the mills in the tentative motion, which is above mentioned as the increase above the rolled, is there a rolled-back millage rate? And what is that rolled-back millage rate?
I have the rollback millage rate is six point one nine three eight.
That's correct.
And that is one point seven one over rollback.
Yes, one point seven one percent over rollback, that's correct.
I'm assuming the second still stands. Are you all good, City Clerk?
Yes, sir, and thank you so much for letting me, as I sit this first budget hearing in place of my own boss. Yes, sir, and thank you so much for letting me, as I sit this first budget hearing in place of my, my, my own boss. Uh, Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
And Member Stokel?
Yes.
All right, next motion?
Move to tentatively adopt ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, adopting the general and related budgets of the city for twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Um, for further discussion, I do have a couple of questions. We obviously had the payoff for the Titus landing. But we have one point two million dollars going into the North Brevard Economic Development Zone through our TIF that we had. How did that get removed from our trim? And what allows us to do that with the conflicting ordinances that we already have in place?
That particular TIF was just automatically removed once the zone was dissolved by the county. And so they went through the Department of Revenue, and that's how, how that was formally dissolved. So there no longer is a TIF because there's no longer a zone. Um, I do believe there's a contract between the city and the county that had to deal with the zone that, I'm not sure where, with Mr. Stokes not being here, where that's at. But the money that would have gone to the zone was rolled into the budget, into just the general fund budget, and was dispersed among all the expenses that were asked for. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does, and, and it also unfortunately doesn't. Because we enacted our own ordinance, um, in two thousand and eleven, ordinance eighteen twenty eleven, which says that we're, uh, adopting this, and this money was set aside for economic development. The manner or the fund that it's housed in, I think is inconsequential to the fact that this TIF was established. Approximately of that one point two million, uh, in TIF funds. How, was there any county funds in that one point two million?
No, that was strictly city funds.
Strictly city. Okay, because, you know, my concern is council hasn't really decided what we're going to do with economic development. So losing that TIF, um, could be detrimental to that strategy. Because if we were to reestablish a TIF using twenty twenty-five property values, uh, it ain't going to generate anything for a very long time. So I was just concerned as to how that all happened.
So what I would tell you is if a TIF is reestablished, it would have to probably, I'm not overly familiar with that ordinance, but I, I am, I have heard of that ordinance. It would have to establish new boundaries and, because that particular ordinance was designed to cover the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, and that was done in conjunction with that, I believe. And so in order to get the, do another TIF, you would have to apply for that and have that jurisdiction done and go through the whole process again. Now, I understand we have an ordinance, but I think it would have to be revised to meet whatever the needs are that we have right now. And so in order to set aside a TIF, I would have to have all of the criteria in order to be able to calculate what that TIF would be, what the boundaries would be, et cetera. So that's why there's no TIF technically from a financial standpoint.
And hopefully people can understand my concern, because it seems like we, we fight like heck to keep our CRA intact because of those TIF funds that are earmarked specifically for, uh, the downtown area. And now we, we had a TIF, and now it, it's, it's gone. Uh, I don't think them, the county pulling out of our MOU with us regarding the North Brevard Economic Development Zone fundamentally changes our ordinance, because it doesn't change our ordinance, our ordinance still stands, but changes the manner in which, A, we collect, B, we use it for. And therefore, I think ipso facto, uh, the Department of Revenue should not have removed that from the trim. I believe those funds should have stayed there. Uh, so again, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. Because I, again, I don't know what council's going to decide on, except November thirteenth, I don't remember the date. But I think it'd be behoof us to make sure that we keep every available tool possible, uh, until we decide. Member Stokel?
Yes, um, okay, I think I'm, I'm following what you're saying. So I, and we don't have the city attorney here, but my guess is that we were setting aside those funds because of the TIF. And so your concern is that we had all known that that money's being set aside strictly for economic development. But then I think to your point is, there's also an underlying agreement that the county will be contributing to it, and so we knew that. And so I think to Terry's point is, we can't continue in that model if the county, I mean, the county dissolved it, unfortunately. And so if we did want to have it, and maybe this was a little bit premature potentially, because we haven't decided yet until November. But I don't think Terry could have done anything other than kind of what you did, because we don't have that agreement in place, um, for it. So I think if we wanted to start something back up again, I feel like there's enough flexibility here to do it. But I hear you, because you're, there was an underlying with this ordinance that we need to set aside these funds for economic development. But you can't really do that, I feel like, if it's dissolved by the county. And now we're, we need to decide what we're going to do.
So there are trim regulations, as you know, and those are gone off of the Oasis website that the Department of Revenue uses. I don't even have a way to fill out the DR four twenty, four twenty-two, four eighty-seven, and so forth. So I don't even have a mechanism which to do that with. I think you do have options based on that ordinance going forward. If there's something that the city council determines they'd like to do or establish. And it doesn't even necessarily have to be a TIF. There are other, other financial economic ways that you could set money aside and restrict funds for economic development. TIPS are a little bit particular, and as you know, um, this state is a little rough on special districts and CRAs, and they're trying to eliminate them. So I'm not sure you, that, how that you would go about reestablishing that. That would be, the city attorney would have to help you with that. But you do have other financial mechanisms available to you, and at some point, I would be happy to point those out to you.
I, I definitely appreciate that, and, you know, I guess.
Mayor, also additionally, as you recall, we did receive a check for five hundred thousand dollars, which council already set aside for economic development as initial seed money.
I, I understand that, um, but when the MOU was formed and the zone was formed, right? We had our own city dollars in there. That's where we did the Titusville Mall deal, and the county had their funds.
Mm-hmm.
So we each kind of funded like separate silos of that. And now, don't get me wrong, they were all administratively done at the same level, and we shared some costs there. But essentially, we had two separate buckets. So the city TIF dollars in the zone were designed for city projects. It's not like the city TIF dollars really funded outside of the city projects. And, you know, if you look at the, the ordinance, the only thing that's really cha- had changed is what bank account the money's going into. The North Brevard Economic Development Zone Trust Fund is no longer available. But that doesn't really change the intent of the, the ordinance of, we're setting this money aside for economic development, and this is here, here's how we're going to calculate it. And again, to, um, Ms. Terry's point, the state government isn't really going to give us another TIF.
Yeah. No, I mean, I wish we could, this didn't happen, but it did. And I think the intent, though, with those monies being set aside, was the understanding that the county was also giving a portion. So that's the issue there, and I feel like if we were to continue on, which I don't even think we could legally, it's a little misleading to say we're going to continue this on, knowing that we don't still have that agreement in place. We would have to come forward and decide on what to do with it anyway. I, so that's where I'm wondering, I guess, what would you wish we would have done differently? Made a decision sooner, maybe?
No, it's not, not necessarily that, but, you know, if, if this was designed for economic development, then I think it should have stayed in the economic development bucket until council decided to change that. Whether it's, you know, putting it back in the general fund, or abolishing that ordinance, changing that ordinance. But, you know, that ordinance still stands.
Yeah.
So it's more, I think, procedural than anything else.
Okay.
Mayor, could I, could I add just one more comment? The North Brevard Economic Development Zone TIF was for a very specific area. That's, it, it was outlined and, and it was used only in that area. Should the city council decide they want to do more economic incentive type projects, not having the TIF would open them up to the entire city, not just a specific area. And so that may be something you might want to consider as well. Like I said, there was a zoned area that was, uh, it was plotted out specifically for the zone, and those projects could only take place within that plotted area. And so if you wanted to, uh, increase economic development citywide, it may be a better option to use a different type of restriction of funds, which you could do, uh, rather than specifically a TIF. Um, there are other options. TIF is just one of, of a few, so.
And we can still set aside a budget for economic development in general.
Did the zone not include the entire city of Titusville?
I don't believe it did.
I feel like, well, I think it expand, it definitely expanded beyond Titusville to, into portage on other areas.
Incorporated areas.
Well, it wasn't incorporated areas, but included the entire city.
Yeah. Brad, do you?
The zone itself included all of North Brevard from King's Highway going north, yes.
Yeah, it included that entire area, but our TIF dollars specifically were spent in Titusville.
Correct. The, that ordinance you referenced actually specified specific parcels and uses codes that would be counted towards that, had, that, um, set aside inside the city of Titusville only. So it was a city-specific ordinance.
Yeah, so we basically had it set up and it was running, and the only thing that was really unique is that the county administered it. So. But to their own projects, for, in the county, not necessarily in the city. All right, any further discussion? I have a motion and I have a second. City clerk, can you call the rule?
Uh, yes, for ordinance number twenty-eight, uh, Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager?
And the final motion needed is to tentatively adopt the Enterprise and Capital Improvement Program budgets.
Well, they lumped three of them all into one.
So we need a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-one twenty twenty-five.
Yes.
Adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvement Pro- Programs for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager?
Uh, just petitions and requests.
All right. Petitions and requests from the public, as this is a special meeting, all comments must relate directly to the meeting. Anybody from the public?
My name is Stan Johnston. I'm a professional engineer, work for the city, been here for over fifty-four years. And, um, I have, uh, in the back of the, behind me, against the wall, is there's, um, several signs. One is a photo of the dam, one is a photo with large letters saying nonsense. Another one is, has to do with, in red letters, fraud. And then the, uh, number four is, has the XXX and, uh, meltdown. And number five was the Titusville cover-up.
Mr. Johnson, this is a public comment for a special meeting, and it has to relate directly to this meeting.
It does. And all these, all these signs has to do with the budgeting of the city of Titusville and the, and what you're not doing. All of these signs have to do with that. That's why I put them there. Plus, I also quoted the, uh, email of June the twenty-fifth and July the twenty-sixth, which has been over two months and still, no, no council have, have not had, although I have had a call from, uh, Ms. Moscoso. So what I'm saying is that, is that you're not listening, and the thing is, I'm, and you're putting me down, even though I'm, I'm staying on topic, which is budgeting. These are budgeting issues right here. These are budgeting issues, all of them.
Well, none of them are for twenty twenty-six, so I'm going to caution you again.
Beg your pardon?
None of them are for twenty twenty-six.
Oh, they are.
This whole year, so please stay on topic.
They've been going on for years. In other words, for example, the fraud the city has, the seventy thousand dollar fraud, that's been going on for many years. Fl- uh, water flows downhill, that's been going on for many years. Dams have been going on for many years. It still continues. Failure to follow the, the capital improvements of the, uh, Stormwater Master Plan of Greater Titusville has been going on for many, many years, over forty years. And it's not being done. So what I'm saying was, is that I've been removed from the podium repeatedly today for items which, as far as I can see, is I, as a professional engineer, speaking about health, safety, and welfare, which is a big, which is over fifty percent of your budget, as you show in your pie charts, is that I've been told that I'm not staying on topic, which I'm saying I am staying on topic. I oppose what you're doing, very much so, for many reasons, and I've prayed about it a good bit. You know I have. I mean, I've sent you emails about my prayers, about, I want this, I want the truth to be done here on these, on these issues of the budgeting and spraying, and, and the health, safety, and welfare of the public, which the city is, is, was, I, I've noted to you that the city is dysfunctional and dishonest. So I pray for y'all to listen and to, uh, follow the Constitution and to, uh, understand that, uh, you're not acting ethically or legally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any, anybody else from the public? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Let, we're adjourned.